Like call order. The City of Columbia and the planning commission meeting, March twelfth, twenty twenty four. We'll start with an invocation by Dan and then we'll all rise for the pledge allegiance.
Lord, we acknowledge your presence among us tonight. We know you are always with us and we pray for your guidance during this meeting. Grant our commission the wisdom to work in the best interest of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that was pretty neat. I could hear everybody but me. That was great. Okay, we'll start with a roll call.
Scott?
Here.
Bryce?
Here.
Ted?
Yes, here.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
You all received a copy of the February thirteenth minutes. Is there any additions or corrections for that? If not, they'll stand as presented. We have two items tonight. Old business, a public hearing at seven fifteen PM, Discount Drug Mart. One, four, four, five, oh, South Avenue, about signage. That's at seven fifteen. We'll wait to hear about twelve minutes on that. New business is a site plan review, tractor supply, and Dollar Tree, corner Springfield Road and State Route fourteen, new construction. Are they here tonight? Come on up. You were here previously with us, a preliminary site plan?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we give you the blessing. I am understanding that you met with our city superintendents, our city engineer and come back with a final presentation.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Go ahead.
Well, good evening, board and chair. My name is Bill Schroeder. I am the architect with Coke Development over in Boardman, Ohio. And today we are presenting our site plan hopefully for approval of Dollar Tree and Tractor Supply on one lot.
And I think we've had discussion about light intrusion, sound intrusion, stormwater. Uh, it sounds like most of that's been addressed.
Yes.
Then the other, any questions from the board on this subject? One of my concerns was, uh, stormwater on the, it would be the west side. I kind of looked over your stormwater the best I could with the small map that I had and is it gonna flow naturally to your retaining pond? Is that?
Yes, the, um, it does slope in that direction. So we, we're taking that all into account. Um, I have the civil engineer online if you want, would like to ask him any questions.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I, it's just one of my concerns. Uh, also, and I'm not sure where the water, the runoff from the development to the west of you ends up to, does that end up on, on your property?
Yes, it does. Um, that, that development is possibly five feet higher than our, our land. Either by intent or accident, we have this separation between the two.
Okay. Okay.
John, did you review this?
I have not been able to complete my review. I was away at the end of February. Um, and it came in and haven't been able to complete the final review on everything, but I, I have done first relocated everything and it appears to item for the testing or doing that need have have been submitted. I just have not had time to do the final review.
But it looks like it's gonna crouch out.
The, the stormwater looks like it's gonna crouch out to me. It does, there is some, um, slope to the pond and then the storms shivers that carry it through the pond and so.
Okay.
I haven't been able to look at the couch detail, but the design looks to me like it will.
Okay.
Just so that you all know, any decision you make would be subject to John's review. So, you know, whether you approve this, we still have to have his approval on everything. So just so you're aware of that.
You're aware of our next issue is signage and they're, they're here for a variance on signage. So on that, so if you, I don't know if you reviewed our sign ordinances for a C four or not. If you can fit that, make that work for you?
We have, we are working with a sign fabricator now.
Okay.
Who has been in contact with the, the local, um, I believe the local planner and has a copy of the of the ordinance.
Okay, very good. Very good.
You, I believe you have a copy in your set. It looks like that.
I did not see that. I see it now. Oh, maybe it just came and I spaced it too quick. Okay, it's in this one.
A giant lollipop. And that's the sign you're proposing. Uh, so now, yes, it is, sir.
Yeah, if, if we would approve tonight, that would be on condition that the sign would meet our code or if we need it for that variant.
Yes, sir.
You first could approve on the condition of all the signage.
Right. Right.
The zoning code.
Right. Any other questions?
And looking at the, uh, parking lot, can you just kind of explain to me the traffic flow kind of between the two, the two sections? Obviously, there's a lane there. Um, but just how would you envision that happening on, in, in everyday, just typical business use?
It's more, it'll have a, uh, well, essentially a, uh, counterclockwise or clockwise rotation around the back. And then, um, any, anything to do with this automotive travel. You can see there's the one-way traffic on the left side of Dollar Tree. And then as for the trucks, they would go from the entry lane all the way to the far side. And the area that's at the, um, we'll call it the southwest corner, that is large enough to turn a truck around. So they, they would completely take advantage of the far lanes and then come straight across through the, uh, the entry.
Any other questions here? Dan, you have a comment?
I do. Um, I have some questions and a comment. Uh, Deanne Davis, seven twenty Springfield Road. I own one of the condominiums in the Meadows. And, uh, so I have several questions about the plans. The fence that you're planning to install, uh, what is the height of that? And is that a solid fence or are there breaks in the fence?
It would be an opaque fence, um, meeting whatever your requirements are. Um, we prefer a, uh, non, a non, um, decalable type. So it'll be either a, um, chain link supported fence with some opaque material or a, um, slat fence made out of, again, a, uh, synthetic material. And then the intention would be six feet high at the top of the berm. Since there's a five-foot change of elevation, putting it toward the bottom wouldn't be helpful.
Okay, and will there be a landscape buffer in addition to the fence?
Um, we were looking at the idea of not having it, but if it is necessary, it would, just because of the geometry of the site, it would be on the condo's side, so the west side of the fence. This create, would create a condition where we would need to have people come in to the, along the west side or the east side of the development to maintain the plant life. So we're, if we had just the fence, that would, that wouldn't be necessary. But if we add landscaping, it does require some sort of covenant or per- permission.
Permission from the condominium association, is that what?
An easement, a covenant, various other things that the gentleman over here would probably be better to define. Whose name is not Matt.
Okay, and uh, what type of lighting is planned?
Will be LED. It is shielded fixtures in that they're all intended to be downlight. In one of the, one of the images on the pre, earlier set or package sent has a rendering of the lighting plan. Just the computer program produces that for us and you can see that the light does not bleed past the edge of the property. And the, with the fence there to make it even less of a problem.
And I believe you explained, uh, the trucking path. My understanding, as you said, the trucks that are delivering will come around to the back of the building. So is that all the traffic that will be behind the building? Customers will not be driving behind the building. It would just be.
Only if they're lost. Um, but they're, they can always get out. The, um, there is some parking in the back, but that's pretty much intended for employees. And then, um, there's some parallel parking along the very west edge behind the, uh, what is called the fenced in area that's rendered in yellow on the site plan. And then there's some additional parking just behind Dollar Tree.
And you touched on water drainage. Uh, water drainage has been a problem in our development over the years and we are very concerned that the addition of asphalt could add to uh, water problems. So what, what assurances would we have that this would not flood our homes?
Well, one, it is lower than your, than your site. And then obviously is calculated to bring all the surface water to the retention area and then away from the site over time.
About a minute. I'll go longer than a minute. I can tell you that right now.
Well, take your, take the minute.
Okay.
Then we'll, then we'll go to
Then we'll.
To our next letter and you'll have to just wait.
And then we move on. And yes, I, I would like to introduce you to my community. This is who is sitting in the room tonight. This is the community of people that are going to be affected by this development. Uh, these are my neighbors and my friends. And many of us have owned our homes and lived there for over twenty years. I've lived there for twenty-five years. We have some residents who've lived there for thirty-eight years since the first homes were built in that development. Uh, these are homes that we own. These are not apartments. These are not rentals. These are, are homes. And this project is going to affect the enjoyment of our homes and our outdoor spaces. It will affect our property values. The construction will create noise, dust, and dirt. I don't know when you're planning to start, but we won't be able to enjoy our outdoor spaces or even have our windows open during the construction time period. My understanding is you're going to remove all of the trees. So we're going to lose the trees that have enhanced our outdoor time at our homes. Uh, we walk and we bicycle on Springfield Road. On our way to the park, on our way down to the weigh station. I know there are some representatives here from the weigh station tonight, uh, that might want to express their concern about the project. Uh, the services that they have offered to the community for thirty-five years are going to be impacted by this project. So they may want the opportunity to speak as well. Uh, we do ask you to give serious consideration to how this is going to affect our homes.
Perfect timing. Okay, we're gonna have to pause on this issue as we have a public hearing scheduled for seven fifteen and it is now seven fifteen. So, uh, moving back to old business, if you take a seat, then we'll come back to you. Moving back to old business, we have a public hearing, seven fifteen, Discount Drug Mart, one, four, four, five, zero, South Avenue, about signage. We have a representative from Drudge Lot Red Mart here. Wanna state your name and, uh, explain to us what you're looking for.
Uh, my name is Amy Noble. I'm from Ellet Sign. We're the local sign manufacturer and installer for Discount Drug Mart. Did you need address? No.
Yeah, they can't hear you.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Well, he'll let you know if he can't hear, okay?
Got it. Uh, first, thank you very much for your time this evening. Uh, what we have for your consideration is relief.
Get right up to it. Maybe he can help you too.
Maybe.
A little bit.
Okay. Um, this evening we're looking for relief from your general sign code, um, which only allows for two signs per wall or a total of three wall signs in this case. And I have some.
We have small stuff here. Maybe you should display it facing that way. I think there are probably some interested parties behind you.
Okay.
And or, or bring them up here and I'll hold them and you can talk.
I don't know if you, oh, pass these around. Okay.
There you go.
Um, I am not anybody associated with Drug Mart.
So for the location, we're looking for, um, corporate style branding. Um, what you see here is what is typically found at Drug Mart locations across the state. And that is represented by two large Drug Mart signs on the entry tower, which is the south and west elevations. Uh, there is a drive-through pharmacy, which is, um, also highlighted, which are the primary signs. We have deli and produce, professional medical supplies, digital photo, as well as a smaller set of Discount Drug Mart um, on the south ele, I'm sorry, north elevation.
Got one on the north.
Yes.
Your, the one that you said west would be the east elevation, right? Facing east. Facing one sixty-four.
Yes. Yes. Sorry. I also have Christie Carter from Discount Drug Mart here with me this evening, which is why I'm glancing over my shoulder.
Okay.
She's here to field any Drug Mart question.
Okay.
Um, we feel that these signs are essential to the success of this new business and that it features services that are not widely known. First would be the, the deli and fresh produce being offered at this location. Other is professional medical supplies, um, advertising home healthcare services that are offered, such as, um, the ability to order medical beds, specialty medical equipment, ventilators, CPAP machines, oxygen, lift chairs, walkers, diabetic shoes, things you wouldn't normally associate with a normal drugstore. Um, digital photo, you can go there for passport photos, custom, uh, cards for Christmas time, photo books, wall decor, print and copy services. Um, these are a few of the services, obviously, that we're looking to identify.
One of my questions, will these be illuminated only during business hours?
Correct.
Okay.
They're set on a timer and so during store hours, they will be illuminated if it's dark out.
Okay.
Um, after business hours closes ten o'clock? Yes.
Okay.
Um, the signs will be shut off. They'll be on a timer.
But you'll still have parking like uh, lights in the parking lot, of course.
So parking lot lights are all put off and I may have some emergency lights that are illuminated, but, um, not.
Very important for those neighbors to understand that.
Yes.
Yeah, the neighbors across the street. How will these lights impact them?
So, Christie, do you wanna know where the development is? And here's the site plan. I don't know if that helps.
Okay, so the east side. Hi, I'm Christie Carter from Discount Drug Mart. So the east side of the property is along South Avenue.
Let's, uh, let her do her presentation and we'll save our talking for later.
Okay, so, um, along South Avenue is, is what we're calling the east side of the development of the, uh, building. And our building is set. I'm thinking it's gonna be about four or five feet below road level. So our building signs will not be, you know, as high as, you know, the buildings across the street. Um, the illumination of the signs themselves are more ambient. They aren't extremely bright. And we've also just, um, installed, we've just built a building in a neighborhood in Parma where it is, it's got it's an actual residential neighborhood off the, you know, beaten path and the residents there have not been affected by the signage. Um, we did have these discussions before, but, um, there's been no issues. So it, I do not anticipate there being issues. We are a we're, we're in several, you know, residential communities and we, we really just haven't had any issues. We don't need the signage to be extremely bright. It's more to catch the attention of the people that are driving by so they can see what we're offering and that we're there.
Are you having a pole sign or?
No, it's a monument sign. It'd be ground level. And it'll be at the intersection of the new access road to the residential development behind us. So kind of at the intersection of Bay Shore and the access road that will, is in process currently where our property is being constructed.
There could be these sidewalks. Is there gonna be any, any, uh, from the road down that there's gonna be a barrier? Because right now, this is how I look at it. It's a two-lane highway. We have a sidewalk on our side. And if anybody's gonna have cars going anywhere, it's gonna go into ours. I think that we need to have a barrier on your side of the road.
We do have a.
Or a turn-on lane. I, that would even be better. A lane that would go right into the development here.
I can speak to the sidewalks. There is a sidewalk completely across the entire front of our property. All along South Avenue, it turns around the new access road and continues to the development behind. As far as anything related to roadways or traffic, I cannot speak to that.
That's a state issue. That, that doesn't even include us as a city. That's a state issue. That's a state route.
And, Mr. Chairman, just so that it's clear, this is just for Discount Drug Mart. So the signage for the development is probably something that you know nothing about, correct?
No, we are not related to the development.
Involved in that.
Correct.
I just wanna make sure.
This is just our little, you know, our section of land that we're developing. Everything else is handled through, correct?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Drug Mart signs, one would be physically attached to the building or will you have freestanding signs like at that entrance of the new access road in one sixty-four? Will there be a sign there?
There will be one freestanding sign. I think it's about ten feet tall, eleven feet high, um, from the ground level. And then the rest of the signs are on our building and then we have some directional signage within the parking lot that are about this high, just to kind of get you to the drive-through, get you to the, uh, the delivery dock, you know, that sort of thing, just directionals within the parking lot, which you won't even see from the street because we are again set down low. If you I'm sure you've noticed the, uh, the construction across the street. I was like, wow, we're in a pit again. I didn't think it would be this low, but, um, hey, I figure that'll be great for you guys as far as, uh, not having to see too awful much of the building.
Question over here?
It's been wondering, I think stuff with, uh, your location and this, um.
Okay.
I don't remember you having all of the little deli and all that kind of stuff there.
Yes, those are all there. Yep. This is our actual, our standard prototype package, basically our brand standards that we uh, propose for all of our locations.
Just once you go in there, once you go in through, you know that you have all this stuff.
True, but if you are not familiar with Drug Mart, you don't know until you end up inside. So that's kind of part of the purpose of the building signs is to attract, attract the traffic that's driving by so that they're like, oh, hey, I can grab some groceries here on my way home from work or.
Columbia is a small town. It's growing rapidly, but, um, and we all have, and so I don't know the key, all of it's it's, that is my only thing. Other than that, like.
Thank you.
Folks, are there any pool with the turning lanes on there with the state?
No, we don't.
Lisbon, the one in Lisbon has three lanes or.
You would, you would have to apply. It would have to be studied.
Hot years.
And they're probably too close to the road to let it happen.
For a traffic light to go from.
No, no, a turning lane, a turning lane.
Uh, yeah, uh, we went, we went through a lot just to get seven and fourteen turning lanes. It, it wasn't easy.
We said it are lights for five minutes long.
Yeah.
The traffic area, we have no way.
Yeah.
The turn left.
No left.
It's only gonna get worse.
And it's right across their entrance. We'll be right across the mark.
Sometimes one car.
The, uh, the glory about theirs is you can sneak out on the forty-six when it's all done. So they, you, you know, you can get out the other way from Drug Mart.
Well, we have Wendy's now. It's, it's on the other side. We can get out anyway.
Well, you won't have to go anywhere to drive. You can walk everywhere.
See, if I want to go to the hospital, I wanna be able to get out. That's our concern. We don't want to overfeed when our development.
I, I think the misconception here is everything you guys are asking is relevant, but we're only here about signs. Right. So any of that other stuff, it's already been approved, am I correct? The site location.
Site location.
The site location has been approved. Um, everything of course, subject to engineering. When you start looking at turn lanes, traffic lights, anything like that, unfortunately, I'm gonna use four letters, ODOT. And I'm not trying to be funny, but that's who controls all of this. The city does not. You've heard comments as far as what it took to get turn lanes at State Route seven and fourteen, about ten years. There are some other plans that the city has, but everything is subject to a study that ODOT does that takes a couple of years and then you can apply for grants and then you can go through that process. You're easily at five years if they're going to approve what it is you want to do.
And then to get the speed limit that was reduced to thirty-five was at least what, a two-year project?
Yes.
But I was getting a comment, does it have flashing lights or anything to help us?
That's just, that's ODOT.
Been asked before we went ahead with all this.
Your police department is gonna be responding. I've been in law enforcement over thirty-two years. I can tell you, they're responding to a lot more accidents. They're just gonna have to bail. They don't even go near the speed. ODOT, ODOT is fine, you know, all their studies and everything. We all, everybody in this room knows people on those people. We're going to see them seven miles an hour right now. And there's no enforcement. I've seen none. I mean, I know it's no dot situation. I know guys, that your police department is gonna be responding to a lot of calls of service, a lot of accidents. When it's, if, if, if this is not, you know, something's not done about the traffic. I can tell you that.
That would be a city council. What? That would be for city council. That's a city council not playing a competition, huh? We'll, we'll throw that on the big flap.
If all coordinates close, you know, the old golfers, they can sit there and monitor. They didn't catch them.
Yeah.
They don't catch them.
It's not enough. I think.
Well.
Really. Okay.
Any other comments? I mean, we've kind of, you know, like, we, we are here about signs, you know, we're, we're, we've hit a lot of the other things and we understand your concerns. We're glad to see everybody here and voice their concerns. But, but the end thing is we're here about signage. There's no more questions on signs. I will close this public hearing. One in the corner.
Yes, sir, uh, will there be any more discussion about tractor supply?
Yes, yes, as soon as we're done here with this, then we're going right back to tractor supply.
Thank you.
I think they threw the wrong needle.
So we have the board, we can, uh.
So. Yes, it's a red.
Make a motion to.
Prove their request?
We can.
Correct, only.
We can, um, table and talk about it.
That's what they're having. I can't speak to any traffic control, this is our.
Can't just pass a motion that says.
Okay.
Go for it, we're gonna have to list each and every one. That's why I said. Maybe one thing.
Okay, you're saying.
How should we proceed?
Planning Commission could probably take action on this, but if we do, we're supposed to follow a specific. You know, list each and every condition of why we're doing that. They may be better served if we discuss this and then come back with a written decision.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last.
Discuss this and come back with the written decision that I would probably, so that we are doing things pursuant to what our ordinance says in my law. So that everybody. You'll have.
Yeah.
We're not gonna make that review and everything else, it's just us to do our work, I look at my ordinance. They are supposed to not just pass a motion that says, yes or no, they're supposed to actually list the criteria. And rather than do that.
What he's saying is.
With a public hearing, everybody here, I don't want them to understand these.
You would have to ask the chairperson, he's running. Right now, they're addressing the signs. You would have.
My job is to make sure they got the eyes across the table. So to somebody doesn't like the decision.
No, not while they're discussing this.
They know where they stand.
I'm just. Yes.
We're not, yeah, I know, we're not. But I made this suggestion to the chair so that.
Okay.
Yeah. What criteria that's supposed to offer in this site? And honestly, my idea is I may write the actual motion so that it has all of the logical terminology that I think it should, not in that way.
Well, we had.
My word. Where they are supposed to do it and not trying to hold you up with, gee, we're gonna take. This with a nice release.
Yeah, this was on their table tonight. It's facing for what we have, it's a little better cop.
You're an iris, yes, we could give you time to respond, but my guess is. They will approve or disapprove the entire package, because basically what. I don't see anybody saying, okay, you can have the belly sign, you can't.
We're ready, Mark.
You know. I know, okay. Yes. Right.
Right.
Yes.
I don't. There's, if you have any specific.
I think we'll just go ahead, you know, talk forever.
Yeah, go ahead.
We as a board have made a decision up here, I think, uh, Jeff, if you wanna make that motion.
Uh, upon advice from our municipal attorney, I make a motion that we table. Discount Drug Mart sign, application for future signs or additional signs. And so this board can meet, sit down, review it, because according to our ordinance, we have to approve every and each of the individual sign that is being added to this building.
So it will give us a chance to actually study this over and, 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 you know.
I'm a second motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, it will give us a chance to look this over, do this right, and. Are we good with that? Okay. Dan, if you would.
Scott?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. We will look at this next month, we will not drag it out.
Would we be able to expedite that to a sooner period of time, we are kind of up against the gun with lead times to get our production in place?
We may be able to do that.
Okay, yeah, we could probably.
Yeah.
And we'll try to work with you.
We'll work with you.
We appreciate it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back to new business, site plan review for Tractor Supply and Dollar Tree.
I wasn't done, Ted.
Yeah.
Oh, well, back to where we started, let's talk.
I was reminded, uh, we have experts that can answer some of the questions in better detail.
Okay.
Mr. Coca and Mr. Gaunt, the uh, the old, the Coca Development Owner, and then of course, uh, Matt Gaunt is the uh, civil engineer who, who uh. Is developing the site plan.
Okay, very good, Dan has more questions.
Uh, the one thing that stuck out to me, one of the comments you said was a chain link or a slap fence, I know, I do not want to look out my kitchen window at a chain link or a slap fence. I would definitely prefer that there be landscaping and I have been told by several of my neighbors that they would prefer to have landscaping as well. I know you said there would, I see that our association managers nodding yes, whether I'm saying that. And I'm sure they would be amenable to granting whatever easement you would need to maintain. Shrubbery to include shrubbery in that, so we didn't have to stare at a chain link fence.
Right, and, and that's, that would be a request to be a good neighbor. But uh, but again, I cannot speak or promise to the details on that one, but I would um. The, I can defer to the civil engineer just to the nuances of the elevations. And then Mr. Coca can answer any questions about uh, what we're, what we're, we'd like to include.
I, I, I could do that now if you like. Mr. Coca. In, in reference to the uh, uh, the backlog, we, we're from town, I mean, we're from Boardman, I live in Poland. Uh, we wanna be good neighbors, we, we wanna do uh, what the neighborhood would like us to do, if you prefer to have shrubs, we're happy to do shrubs. So we, we're, we're not trying to come into town and uh, do something that we're not gonna be proud of. Uh, one of the unique things about our company is we don't sell our uh, properties, uh, so we're not somebody that uh. What, what normally happens, somebody develops it, sells it to somebody in California or wherever, and you never hear from them again. Um, you know, we, we don't, our offices in Boardman, our, our phone numbers are listed, you know, we're not hiding from anybody, we're. You know, your neighbors and we wanna be good neighbors to you, so if the association would like us to do plannings there instead of fence, if the, if there's no city ordinance requiring a fence, we're happy to do. Uh, whatever you like.
I don't think there's an orange to what, what's allowed, it's just some, it's a, it's a screen of some sort.
Right.
Right, Mark?
Yeah, bumper is not necessarily designed as needing to be a fence or landscaping, it's examples more than anything.
I think you might be happier with staggered pines, a dog fur, it blooms out, goes tall. A fence only just deteriorates.
The, the only thing about. Evergreens or any shrubbery, it starts out little.
And it gets big.
You know, so you have to be patient.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Yes, it, yeah, it would take time for it to grow, but we, we have two concerns, first of all, is what we are going to look at when we're sitting on our decks and when we're looking at our windows. And what's going to look nice as far as our property values, our other concern is customers from Dollar Tree and Tractor Supply wandering onto our properties. We have those two concerns, because the property line is about ten feet from my deck. It is a very close property line.
Yes, and, and to address that a little bit, uh, you, you know, part of not having the driveway in the back uh. Was elevation, uh, and there's a, there's a big elevation drop from the street to the property if we put an entrance in the back. Um, the other part of it is to keep people away from that area, so they're not gonna be pulling in or pulling out on your side of the property line, which again, I. You know, you never know if someone's gonna wander off from anything, but uh, we, we're certainly by putting shrubbery up there that they'd have to cut through the shrubbery and. Uh, and not having an entrance or any reason for them to go in the back of the buildings, um, I, I think would help that. Uh, but we're also open to anything that you think might be, you know, uh, uh, better than what I suggested.
Do any of our managers or anyone else want to, you'd have to come up to the microphone and state your name to speak.
I talk loud. I can talk loud. My name is John Webb, and I also live in the Meadows. And uh, I have one comment pertaining to shrubbery, and then I have a couple of questions for the gentleman. Shrubbery can be purchased at any size. So the saying that the shrubbery has to be small when you purchase it's not true, it can be purchased as high as ten feet. It's just a matter of whether you are going to invest in something that big. So as far as being good neighbors, you know, that, that could be, that could be handled, that could be looked at, that could be. Uh, worked with construction of, of the project. The two questions that I do have, one is light pollution. Now Drug Mart just talked about during town hours, their sign would be turned off. What will Tractor Supply do with their sign?
The um, since I do the, the lighting and the electric work on the drawings, they are designed to turn off and they're on a timer. So once the business closes, they close, Dollar Tree, I experienced this and at, they close at nine o'clock at eight fifty-nine, fifty-nine, that light goes off.
Okay, all right, I, I didn't know whether it does or not, that, that, that's what I'm concerned about. And the other question I have, I don't know if there's an answer to it, but for curiosity's sake. Why can't the entrance to Tractor Supply? Be on fourteen instead of Springfield?
It's a state route, Department of Transportation.
That's a limited access highway.
Well, I know that, but you have, you have the Dairy Queen that enters on fourteen, that's apparently new construction.
There's, there's a certain area, and I'm not sure where the limited access is or goes, John, maybe do you know?
The um, Dairy Queen is outside of the limited access, so that doesn't have that restriction, but there is limited access, but it's.
Right, right in that area.
So we preliminarily, when we met, uh, we, we said, no, no entrance to Route fourteen, and it would be a safety problem to bring uh, traffic out of fourteen and in that thing.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Well, I knew, I knew it wasn't a city situation, it was timed to death, and we think that somebody on the day of would be able to have an.
You, you did her, her, her reply, okay.
By the math and the geometry, I am on your side, but they wouldn't allow it.
Okay, that. Answered my question. Thank you.
You know, I, I can address your, your couple of questions on the shrubbery height, and you're all right, you could buy any size that you want to. Um, you know, the issue that we are always conscious of is that when you buy a larger tree, uh, they're not quite as hardy, they're not able to withstand some of the uh. M- m- maturity period that you're trying to give on a smaller tree, uh, shrub, you know, but our shrubs are gonna be high enough that uh, they'll be at least five foot. Uh, in, in the back there and um, they grow about a foot and a half a year, is, is on a typical, uh, and I think. Uh, Mr. Story mentioned, uh, you know, styrium and that, that makes a lot of sense that if we stagger them a little bit, uh. Have them grow so that they actually do cover it, you know, again, you're still probably be able to see some through it, but it'll, it'll definitely. Uh, lessen what you would normally look at.
I had a question.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my name's Kevin Todd, and I am Secretary of the Allen Lodge Temple Company, we share the other boundaries. The, the condominiums share one, and we, we have the rest of it to the north. Um, I hear they talk about burns and, and plantings and things, um, I'm concerned about the impact that has on the, the natural. Um, reasonable flow of water as it comes down, because we already take, on our property, we already take all the water off the condominiums. Um, and that northeast corner for us is uh, most of the times underwater.
It's very wet.
We try to mow it and, you know, sometimes if it's a reasonably wet spring, uh, we don't get in there till July, or maybe even August, because it just gets that wet. So I'm worried about a berm, I'm worried about other plantings, I don't, I haven't seen a site plan, so I don't know anything about retention ponds, elevations, anything else, so it's like, I mean, we are probably the. We're probably the uh, the, the lowest elevation, I mean, the condos are higher, this will probably be higher, so I think all the water is gonna somehow end up on us and, and that concerns us greatly.
The retention pond is right down in your corner.
Will, will the water from our area flow into this, I'm trying to read the, the elevations.
You know, it, I don't, I won't speak for uh, Matt, and Matt could certainly speak into it, but uh, as our engineer, but normally what happens is, uh, we're required. It, it'll by law to uh, uh, take the impervious area and make sure that we're not creating extra water from what's actually coming there now, and it might even be a slightly less. Uh, a flow than what's coming there now, so we have a retention pond that's on that far north end of our property at the triangle, that'll collect any of the water, and then we put. Uh, uh, equipment in that's going, you know, and I'll call it baffles, but uh, it's gonna let that water out at a rate that's. Less than what it is right now, uh, none of that water will run back into your property, it's actually, if you look at that triangle, that's where the water stores, drains into the drain there. Uh, you know, again, at a, at a slower rate, but there will not be any more water coming there than is coming there now.
Well, the retention pond, it empties out, where does it empty out into, does it empty out to a ditch, does it empty out under State Route fourteen?
Uh, empty, uh, well, go ahead, Matt.
Good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Plan Commission, members of the uh, of the audience, uh, thank you for, for arranging this and letting me speak. Uh, to the gentleman's question, uh, we have done a stormwater analysis of the site and the detention pond. Um, because of, or, or due to state law and also just being a good neighbor, as Mr. Coca has outlined. Um, we look at the existing runoff, um, that is going towards the north. And we analyze what the runoff will be, uh, with all the asphalt in the buildings and the, and the retention pond or the detention pond is sized in such a way. So that the runoff rate uh, will be equal to or less than what it is in the existing conditions. So Mr. Coca was correct. So Mr. Coker was correct in that we're not going to be increasing the rate. To your other question, sir, you asked about where the where the runoff was going to be going to, and on our plans, we're showing a pipe and a flared in section that will go to the Ohio DOT right of way, and that's where the discharge will occur.
Yeah, because I do notice from this that even your retention pond is a little higher, a little higher than our property. By a few feet, I see, so I'm worried, I'm just still worried about what's going to happen in this end of the property down here, it's going to be, it gets under, if this water comes out in there, it's basically going to be useless. All right.
It.
Is this a cut or a fill site?
No, it's cut and filled, we're using what we're removing from the the retention area to fill the site as much as possible.
Gotcha.
There, we're, we've reworked it as much as possible to limit that.
So John, the water's going to run down the south side of fourteen?
Uh, correct.
Heading towards the high tension wires?
Heading, you know, we will head west.
Oh, it's going to head west?
I was thinking there's a pipe under fourteen, right?
Yeah, there is, but this drainage actually, I believe it's it's west, it's it's funny, it's the drainage area split right right here, or some goes east, some goes west, and this goes west.
So at some point, does it go underneath fourteen?
Uh, yes, it goes down to, there's a pipe that's built on the path, carries it on the fourteen. Also, if I can address the, I think Kevin's a specific question here. As I finish my review, I'll I'll certainly look and make sure that there are not, there is not an issue there on property, but what I see on plans, there's a swell, the the bank of the detention pond is elevated a little bit. They have a swell at the toe right at your property line, so it'll carry that water, you were speaking of, out to the ditch. I I will, you know, specifically look at that.
Thank you, the the flip side of that, of course, is that the swell may block the water onto our property that's normally flowing off in that direction, so that's the only thing I'm I'm worried about what's being blocked and also what's being dumped on us.
I don't think anything's going to dump on you, I'll make sure it's not being blocked.
Yeah, and like the condominiums have said, you know, we've been there a long time, we've been at that site, I think this year will be fifty years, and in this town since eighteen fifty-six. So we're kind of concerned, we're a hundred and a half, hundred and sixty-eight years? So I'm a little concerned that we were there for all that time, and now all of a sudden, everything develops around us, and it's all going to dump on us, so we're already dealing with it now. It's just, I want to make sure that doesn't happen to any worse than what it is, thank you.
Am I right, John, that they can't change the natural flow of water?
No, no, they can't, and and they're really not, it's still ending up with the same, you know, the natural flow ends up right right where they're outletting, so they are not, you know, changing things. They're just controlling the the additional that is creating.
What, okay. Okay.
Ted, I can see that gentleman online, the first name is Matt, sir, what is your second, last name for the record?
G A U N T T.
Thank you.
You're right, welcome.
Hi, I'm Chaney Nesbitt, I'm the Executive Director for the Way Station, we're at seven six nine Springfield Road, and I'm joined by two board members, Pastor Chris Nelson and Mark Blackburn. So I will say that while you did answer some of my questions and concerns, you didn't alleviate any of them, so I understand now why it's not going to be a turnoff from State Route fourteen. But we are genuinely concerned about the safety of our customers who tend to be more elderly. That road is very pedestrian traffic, although there's not a lot of sidewalks, so people are walking down the streets. I don't know if you can answer this question in regards to the operations of Tractor Supply and Dollar Tree, but we're very concerned about the truck traffic that's going to be on Springfield Road now. Is there any sort of limitations to their delivery times and and things of that nature that might help us at least understand when there's going to be more truck traffic on Springfield Road?
Anthony, do you have an answer for that?
I I can, sorry, I could barely hear what she was asking, was it about what time the trucks come?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they, you know, normally what they do is they're going to come during their business hours normally before they open or or right as they open. So that the staff that's working at, they don't bring in new staffing to do it, so it won't be any times that are going to be an odd time, it'll be, like I said, probably before they open is normally where they are, but obviously every truck can't get you know, to every location before they open, but it's, you know, the the idea of the truck traffic, I mean, Dollar Tree might have between one and two trucks a week at max. Tractor Supply would say, you know, possibly as high as three to four, but never more than that. You know, we we, I guess as a property owner, we'd love to have a little bit more, but that that's probably the maximum they're going to do is be able to put out two semi-loads of, you know, product out in a week, so it isn't like there's traffic coming every single day and trucks coming every day.
Um, my next question then too is, when this, I don't, I actually don't know if this has been approved to happen here or not for the city, but, and I get it, I understood the conversation with Drug Mart and the lights and the safety concerns on the street, but has the planning commission taken into consideration how busy this intersection is and how much more busy that intersection is going to be? Is, have have you considered that when you decided to to place this? I mean, really poppin' business, I'm a little excited about Dollar Tree, I'm not, but have you considered that, that this is going to really increase the traffic at that intersection now? And what what is the city's plans for, you have none?
Again, it is state highway.
So we're waiting for there to be a problem?
So we can ask for probably for a traffic study. And it can drag out, and they can say yea or nay, most likely nay, I mean, they look a lot at accidents before they really get concerned, you know? They don't, I mean, at seven fourteen, that's what stirred it mostly, was accidents. And it took several years, and and that's sad to say, but that's how it works.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris Nelson and Pastor Chris Nelson, and this is for the the commission, and this is not, I apologize if this is inappropriate, this is a community question. It's not a Tractor Supply question, which is, at what point do we as a community limit development with consideration of the safety and the traffic of pedestrians and other residents? Because I I've just been hearing today the concerns about traffic volume and pedestrians and stuff, and just saying, it's the state's problem, it's the state's problem, which I understand, but at what point do we say being able to walk from the condominiums to the way station safely is important?
Well, I'm going to answer that, and then nobody may like it. But I have a very dear friend that had this, made this statement that when you're green, you're growing, when you're ripe, you're rotten. We want to continue to grow this community, we want to be green, we want to be growing. And we don't want to sit and rot. Yeah, sure.
In response to that comment, I agree as far as being green and growing, but why does it, why do we have to grow to where it's going to affect so many people negatively? That little piece of property is not really, seems like it's going to be large enough for what these people want to do. The American Legion has two and a half acres for sale. There's a piece of property on seven and fourteen that nothing is going to be there. Why would something in this small of an area that's going to affect so many people negatively progress? I I, that that that's just a puzzling question that I think we all have.
So if I can answer a little storytelling. When Army Armstrong built Ace Hardware, Dave Cooley wanted to take over Ace, and Army hesitated, so Dave Cooley bought this property to build a hardware store on. Didn't happen. Time goes on, from being a Chevrolet, looked to building a car dealership ten years ago on this property. So things come to fruition, things are going to happen, we're not all going to get what we want, I understand all the concerns, do you have a sidewalk?
It's not part of the plan.
There isn't currently a sidewalk on that side, but it is on the other side of the, you know.
No.
It's not sidewalks. Side sidewalk ends with the condo.
So maybe to alleviate a little bit of stress here, a four-foot sidewalk, five-foot sidewalk to your entrance, the city puts a pedestrian signs up and a crosswalk to the way station, I think we solved a lot of issues right there.
And we could ask for that.
Well, what what do you think, Anthony?
You know, we're happy to do that, I I'm not sure what that, what that does if we go to our entrance from the back. And and I guess maybe your idea would be that that makes the people in the back be able to walk over to the Dollar Tree easier, and if if that's the case, we're happy to do that.
And to get them across the street to the way station.
But that would be, that would be a city.
Well, that'd be a city crosswalk, not you, no developer, this is city.
Yeah.
Well, that would alleviate that, because as Chaney mentioned, there's some parallel between a Dollar Street customer and a thrift store customer. But if we can make it so you don't necessarily have to drive from one to the other.
Right.
That eliminates or reduces one whole extra complex traffic pattern, which is people crossing Springfield Road.
Again, it's a plan, it's a.
It's great.
Yeah.
So not trying to spend people's money here, but if you run a sidewalk, the city puts a pedestrian crossing, crossing across, flared out, maybe some nice signs, but Rick did bring up a good point. You're going to have somebody, whether it be the city, somebody is going to have to put up a sign that we don't have truck traffic going to the park. So at some point, we're going to have to address that. It's the same thing as the oil and gas guys cutting down past the old Dairy Queen and heading out. Because the GPS says faster you go that way than it is to go down to that side of town.
Correct.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, just to point a border, I happen to see his plans here, and coming in and out of that Meadow Lane a lot for Lodge, it might be a better suggestion if you make your crosswalk where the condo sidewalk ends now, but it is, if you move it down further, you're actually getting closer to the intersection, and you're in an area where the curb.
But then there's no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk on the other side.
There would have to be a sidewalk.
There'd be a sidewalk on the other side.
Can't mandate that.
No. Can't, and there has that building.
I agree.
Yeah, because you've got to, you're going to end up with a crosswalk in an area where there's a curve, and that's probably, you might even check the code.
Once you take that out, then you don't have a sidewalk for people to walk down the street to get into Family Dollar or Tractor Supply.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe easier to continue that same sidewalk, but pedestrian crossing to the way station, put a sidewalk that doesn't exist on the other side.
If, if I may opine just a second on the sidewalk, you you certainly could put sidewalk on the other side of Springfield, but if you look at the grades, excuse me, if you look at the grades of the driveways for the various curb cuts on the other side, the driveways come in at a fairly steep slope. And per ADA requirements, we're required to have no more than two percent cross slope on the sidewalk. And it would certainly be difficult to put in sidewalks on the opposite side without pretty significant regrading into those properties to be able to make the make the sidewalks fairly flat across them. So if you were going to put sidewalks in, I would highly recommend on the tractor supplies.
And what's your feel on the feasibility of that?
He said yes.
He said yes.
Okay.
Okay.
If I may also address, not anything with Tractor Supply, except for the fact that it's going in there. My name's Patty McCool, I live at six fifty Springfield Road. I walk Springfield Road every day. There's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on that road. It's been newly posted, there's probably about four, maybe three signs, new signs. Every day I walk, cars go up and down that road forty-five miles an hour, back to back, to back, to back. They don't give a concern about, there's no sidewalk, you have to walk on the road. If you're talking sidewalks, you better start down at fourteen and go all the way up to East Park. It's an issue, it's a safety issue. There's many people that live in Meadow Lane that walk, ride their bikes. It's just becoming so unsafe, and with the increased traffic that's going to occur because of Tractor Supply and Dollar Tree, there's going to be an increase in traffic. There's probably going to be delivery trucks coming down Springfield Road.
That's possible.
There are already.
Well, it's possible, yeah, I mean.
There are.
Unlikely, in my opinion.
I I gotta agree.
Have you been down there?
You don't live there, so it's likely.
All right.
I've lived in the area a lot.
Always, always.
That was more of a council issue as far as speeding traffic, it's not a really a planning commission issue.
We know people.
We know people, yeah.
That is correct.
Yeah, any other questions on?
I think it's a legitimate concern.
I do too, I do too.
Legitimate and.
I think if we can get Mr. Coker to agree to a sidewalk, that's a start.
Yeah, we would agree to do the sidewalk.
I think the city's been fairly successful in getting grants for sidewalks as well, especially out on the south end of town, out towards Fairfield and save a lot of that area to Simran as well, so something we can definitely look at.
Any other questions or concerns from the board or the public?
So is it my understanding then, if they're going to put a fence and shrubbery at the end, that the association will grant them permission to have access to that property to maintain the shrubbery, or is the association going to maintain it?
Well, we have, all of our managers are here right now, but we also have a management company that that runs it, so I don't think we could give you an answer on that tonight, but I saw heads nodding when we were talking about that, that they would definitely be willing to consider that, I don't know if it would be our manager's decision or our management company's decision.
Because, you know, from not only this experience, but many other experiences I've had over the years, whenever you have landscaping as a barrier, somebody has to maintain it, the larger it is when it's placed there, yeah, as Mr. Coker said, chances doesn't mature, but still somebody's going to have to maintain it, and if it's large to begin with, you're going to be maintaining it right away rather than if it's small. So it does become an issue, and it becomes an easement that somebody has to give someone else and be willing to novel idea, honor the easement instead of argue about you're on my property, because that's what you get into, just so that everybody understands that. With a fence, you don't really have that, you have a fence, maybe somebody has to cut weeds on one side, and somebody cuts weeds on the other, but you don't have the ongoing maintenance, so just so that everybody understands that. It's a great idea, but there will have to be easements so that if Mr. Coker puts plantings there, he's able if Mr. Coca puts plantings there, he's able to maintain those.
So I just brought that up so that everybody in this room hears that.
Right, exactly. And if the managers want to have any comment, they're, they're welcome to.
Hi, my name's Carrie, I'm the president of the condo association. And, um, these are my board members next to me, I'm sure we vote to get permission for that and note that you guys would honor your word and take care of the shrubbery. If that's, Deanna's got to look out her kitchen window at a fence. I can under, understand and appreciate, I'd have to be out on my deck looking at a fence. I would appreciate greenery as well, I enjoy the deer and everything else and the wildlife, but that will be gone, so. Greenery would be, you know, definitely appreciated and we would definitely give you permission. Just courteous may let us know when you're doing it, if not, we'll know when you're there, but yeah, we, we would appreciate it for sure.
So the next question would be?
Real quick, you know, speaking for the Allen Lodge Company, the Tupper Company there, um, we'd be the same way. You know, the issue you would have, you wouldn't be able to get equipment in there probably too long. You'd have to wear a beach or something. Yeah, on that, in the north end of that line on our side, it's probably going to be pretty wet. But yeah, as far as getting in, I mean, it's also built along across our property.
So you're saying the irrigation is an issue?
Irrigation. Go there now, it's probably, you see grass and water underneath the top of the grass.
So in tonight's discussion, are we doing one or both? Are we doing fence and shrubbery? We doing shrubbery? Because we're going to make a motion that has to approve and include one or both. Because we've gone both ways tonight.
Yeah.
Well, I prefer just doing one.
Right.
And, um, we did one where we put three foot high avarite at five feet on center. And the intention is they will grow and flush into one another over time. And by doing a consistent plant, you get a nice straight, uh, head row over time.
What I foresee is you're, you're going to have complaints of the coloration of the fence from vegetation growing up it.
Yeah, it's going to.
But I'm not going either way, I'm just asking, because we were mixed the motion. You need to say A or B or A.
Right, right.
My suggestion would probably be for plants, because I, again, if it's my backyard, I think I'd rather look at plants than I would a fence. And, and even if you tried to blend them both together, it, it's not going to work right. You know, the, uh, shrubs and trees will start lifting the, uh, uh, the fence and, you know, it'll look real nice when we're done doing it. And, uh, you know, a few years down the road, it won't look so nice. And, and I really believe everybody in the, you know, at least in the audience and the, and the, uh, partner, the, uh, houses back there seems very reasonable. And, and we certainly are reasonable, and I, I don't think we'll have an issue. We're not going to be intrusive with you when we have to come and, you know, trim the trees. And it'll probably be you telling us to come and trim the trees more than, uh, you know, than us just showing up one day and saying they need to be, uh, trimmed. But, but we're certainly be able to work with you.
Well, trust me, if there are any issues, I'll know how to get ahold of you.
This is your neighbor.
Anything else?
I think we're good.
It's the traffic which you guys have all talked about, so you know it's going to be a bad.
We know there's going to be traffic.
Now, it's going to get worse, it's going to be dangerous, the sign it says dangerous intersection, it's going to get worse, so.
I, I like the sign on, what is it, five thirty-four and fourteen, it's stop sign. It says look and then look again. I like that sign. Somebody want to make a motions? Or you want me to make the motion? I make a motion to approve, providing, uh, everything that's been addressed, including we will, uh, ask for a green barrier, a shrubbery barrier. Uh, I don't know, I think maybe they ought to start at five feet. Give them a chance, you know, we're going to ask for a six foot fence, or we start with a five foot bush, it will be a year and it's up to the six foot. Now, and sidewalk, include a sidewalk to your entrance?
Subject to engineering approval.
Subject to engineering approval.
I'll second Ted's motion.
Any other discussion? Dan?
Bryce?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Oh, I hope we covered all the patients.
I hope so as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, next we have commission comments, any comments in the commission?
Um, I was, uh, received a phone call from Rick Barto from the Columbia Public Library last week regarding that they had taken their property and replotted to one lot. He was under the impression, I'm surprised he's not here tonight, unless somebody told him he didn't have to, that would have to be approved. But I don't want to think we want to hold the library up any longer, it's my understanding the gas company has wrapped up and they are ready to break ground. Does anybody have any knowledge of that?
I have not heard, no.
Has Chairman Surveign reissued a new plot map?
If they're actually replating it, then we'll probably have to sign off on the flat and that's going to have to go through. Obviously, that goes through planning commission before it can be recorded. So if it's an actual plot, yeah, we do have to approve that, you do have to approve that. And then it will have to go through the recording process.
Again, I was surprised, because he, I, he called me out of blue last week in the evening and wanted to know if we had to do that. I said he needed to call city hall, so I was surprised he wasn't here tonight, because they're trying to break ground next month.
And they have been here.
Several times.
Yeah, several times, I've spoken with Rick several times on this, so I don't think this is going to be that complicated.
No, but it needs to be done before they break ground.
It does.
And I was shocked that it wasn't done ahead of time, something must have turned.
Yeah, because I have not heard from them in several months.
But the gas company was success, they got the line moved, everything's wrapped around, it's ready to go, so they're ready to break ground.
All right. I may try to call Rick.
Please.
All right.
Yeah.
Any public comments?
I have a commission comment, chairman. Um, so it has been an absolute honor and privilege to serve on planning commission over the last three years. And on April eighth, I will be assuming the role of deputy city administrator, deputy zoning inspector, which is necessitating my resignation from planning commission effective at the conclusion of this meeting this evening. Uh, so I won't be going far, I'll be at a desk, uh, near you soon. So, thank you all, it's been a pleasure serving with you.
I'll go let you get away that easy.
We want to change in the mind.
Kind of late.
I'd just like to say that we'd really appreciated Bryce's work here on planning commission, he's been a great member. We're very blessed to have him with us and, and we've stolen to the city. We're very happy about that and we look forward to him continuing to service us, so it'll be great.
I can't agree more. Thank you. Public comments. I think we had a lot today, I was glad to see everybody here. It's, it's nice to know you have a concern.